Vice Chairperson Monika is absent. Member Crowley?
Here.
Member Kane?
Here.
Member May?
Here.
Chairperson Lantus?
Here.
And Member Staresniki is absent.
Okay, at this time, I would like to ask the Planning Commission members to make a declaration of any conflict of interest or of any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda so that they might come to a fair decision. Hearing none, we'll move on. Public comments, do we have anybody? Okay, consent agenda, do we need any changes to the April 28, 2022 study session minutes? Anybody see anything?
Actually, yes, I do, and it's actually on for page one and page two. But on the old, it says text amendment to Article 17, Section 17-5. Should that not be 17-9? And that's the same on page one, saying that we're holding a public hearing from 17-5 for the minimum district size. And but yet further into the document, it goes 17-9, which is coinciding with what we have as the Article 17-9.
Okay. Anything else? We have a motion to approve those minutes with the changes stated?
So moved.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Posed, none? Okay, before we move on, we've got a couple of changes to make on page two of the agenda. We're going to strike the first, after the public hearing, the first motion would be to accept the finding as your own. There are no findings for an amendment, according to Director Hall. And then the second, make a motion to approve or disapprove the amendment. We'll be making a motion to... Sure?
I just saw something in the code I thought I'd make you aware of. So it doesn't say anything about findings. There aren't specific findings to be made in the code. It just says to, if you're making a recommendation, the state of reasons for it.
Okay.
I would very agree.
Okay.
But I did just say no.
So but it, okay, so then the second one would be to make a motion, and we won't be to approve or to disapprove, we'll be recommending approval or recommending disapproval to the City Commission. And then under old business rezone, the second motion would be to recommend to the City Commission that they approve or disapprove the rezone. Okay. We're going to open the public hearing to consider amendments to Article 17 of the City of Ottawa zoning regulations regarding mixed-use districts, including but not limited to the amendments in Section 17-9. Minimum district size for the purpose of providing for the appropriate application of the mixed-use zoning classification.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to make the presentation here, and...
Mr. Hall?
Yes?
Would you mind using your microphone? Unfortunately, I don't have very good hearing.
Diane, thank you.
No, thank you.
I tend to forget to do that.
Okay, so I have a, I'm going to present this. We had an April 28 study session on this item, and there was a lot of discussion about what the appropriate minimum should be, and we discussed at least one alternative to that. Also, the request that the Commission made of staff was to bring back information on what uses were allowed and conditional in the districts, or in the two mixed-use districts. And so what I've done is put together a packet that we sent out that included the alternatives, some alternatives to think about, and also information about the uses that are allowed and conditional under the proposed zoning. So there's quite a bit of material in here. This is not something that I would expect you to just read this and get it automatically. I mean, it's just, it's code. And so it's written to be precise, and written for a very specific purpose. So I'm going to go over that. So one thing I want to mention is, or remind everybody, is the reason this even came up was because the rezoning application is also on tonight's agenda. And in order for you, for us, staff, to recommend and for you to forward a recommendation, the minimum district size has to be reduced to something below three acres. So these alternatives that I've laid out in this written material I've provided, there are really, I guess, four alternatives, or two alternatives, and then the other two options for size. In any of those cases, those will accomplish minimally what needs to be accomplished in order to support the rezoning. Just to be clear, so in any of those cases, if you say, I just want to adopt this alternative, and you're questioning that, any of these alternatives will work. Does that, does that make sense? So the first one, what we're recommending, what staff is recommending, that no area shall be, this be written, so no area shall be zoned as M U R C or M U C I districts unless it comprises one acre or more unless it's adjacent to an I industrial district, C commercial district, or P public use district. A minimum district size does not apply when adjacent to one of those districts. And adjacent means immediately abutting. It could mean across the street, directly across the street, or an alley. So the alternative that was discussed, and this was something that was raised by the Chairman at the meeting, was instead of, instead of saying that there's no minimum when it's adjacent to one of those districts, just say that it is one acre or more where adjacent to, and what the Chairman said was to a residential district. So what staff has done is found the districts that are really residential districts. So this, this is intended to meet the intent of what the Chairman brought up at the meeting. So this is a little more, this is probably a little less flexible, a little more restrictive than the alternative recommended by staff at the previous meeting. And I'm going to go over and show you how that, how that actually works in practice, or would work in practice. So the other, the third alternative is just to, to simplify it by saying, in any event, it has to be one acre or more. So there's no distinction about whether it's adjacent to residential or not. And then the fourth one is replace one acre or two acres with, wait a minute. Just replace, just instead of using one acre as a minimum, use two acres a minimum. And again, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't differ by whether it's adjacent to residential or not, or commercial or not. Again, in any of those alternatives, that would, that would be sufficient to allow that rezoning to go forward. The rezoning, the subject property, property that's subject to the rezoning is 2.1 acres. So you might ask, well, why don't you just do it, be simple, and just say it has to be two acres, and we're done? So in looking at this, what I've done is tried to look ahead and see where we might get these requests in the future. And if you look at the intent of the mixed-use district, it is to provide for the adaptive reuse for old buildings. That's a part of it. When you look at older parts of the city, say along North Main Street, areas that are kind of a mix of commercial and residential, those buildings that, those older buildings are on lots that are less than an acre. A lot of times, they're less than a half an acre. So that's why staff recommended what it did. So I'm going to go, well, let me, let me just point out something that's in the packet. And this is on page 11 of the packet. There's a map that shows you the size of a residential block, a typical residential block, because I think that was something that was also discussed at the previous meeting. And based on these blocks, and this is a typical block, this is in the, this is in the center of town, a block is about 4.34 acres in size. That includes the alley. A half a block is just over two acres, 2.07 acres. And then a typical residential lot is going to be around a quarter of an acre. Residential lots vary quite a bit, but I'd say most of them, especially in older parts of the city, are going to be around a quarter of an acre, a third of an acre. You're going to have areas at the fringe that are over a half an acre, some over an acre. Okay, so I want to show you how this is going to, and this is some, this is kind of a repeat of what we talked about at the last meeting. Okay, so if you look at, if you look at this slide, and you look at, wait a minute. Okay. If you look at this lot right there, that is currently zoned R2 residential. It's immediately adjacent to a lot that's zoned C3. So under the first alternative, that could be a candidate for mixed-use zoning. Under the second alternative, it would not be a candidate for mixed-use zoning because it is adjacent to residential. Let's go to, are there any questions about that?
I actually, I'm, I'm curious about the M U R C and the M U C I. The way that I'm reading the intent and definitions currently is that the R C, residential, commercial, mixed-use, is saying compatible with mixed-use within a residential neighborhood. The district includes a balance of compatible residential, office, civic, and neighborhood, commercial, retail. So whenever we're looking at mixed-use residential, commercial, it's predominantly residential versus commercial. And whenever I'm reading the M U C I, it's a commercial with the mixed-use of more of an industrial in that area. So whenever, and I know we're not there yet, but you're giving examples of how it would work, is if the predominant use is residential, and then the surrounding, there's a lot that's, that is proposed as a mixed-use, whether it be commercial or industrial, how do you define what that predominant use is if you're using your example here? So if you have a residential neighborhood on one side, meaning the other side of the street, and on either sides of it, but yet there's one that's backing up to a commercial use, how are we, is that a C U I, or is that a R C?
Are you talking about what is the predominant use in that case?
Mm-hmm.
I would say the predominant use on that block is residential. So if the intent, and I don't have it right in front of me, but if the intent for M U C I is to be in areas where it's not predominantly residential, that would meet that intent. And that's, and so the intent language is fairly broad. That's typical, but it's important.
Sure, exactly. So if it's a residential use, you can take and use it as a commercial use if it's that mixed-use. If, if there's a building that is, that's in the neighborhood and that it's for the retention and attraction of businesses and residences through the adaptive reuse and rehabilitation of existing buildings in a residential neighborhood, it can go to a commercial use, which is allowed within, what was it, the C1, C2? But if you have a commercial use, it doesn't go to residential, it goes to an industrial. You could have, if it's, if its current zoning is, and I'm asking for clarification so I understand, I'm reading it, is that if you have residential, you can bring in commercial. But if you have commercial, you can bring in industrial, it still doesn't allow for residential.
So you really need to look at the use tables.
Mm-hmm.
So the intent language is very broad. It's just stating intent. Where the rubber meets the road are the use tables, the use standards in the tables, and I will go through those.
Okay.
Because that's really where it's going to make a difference. I think what you are raising as a possibility is treating M U R C differently than M U C I, which would be another alternative. And I actually prepared something, and I can show that to you. Maybe after I go through all these, but am I understanding correctly? I think you're, I think you're thinking that there is a difference between M U R C and M U C I.
Yeah, there's a big difference.
Could we get through the public hearing, and then we can have our, then we can have our discussion, our presentation?
Sure.
Yes.
Mike, I did, I did have a quick question. When, with your explanation there, what were you saying last time about you call one adjacent and one adjoining?
Yeah, so generally speaking, adjoining means it's touching.
Because just in your explanation, you said adjacent to.
Yeah, so this, this lot right here, or let's take this lot. That's a better example. That's not adjoining a commercial lot, but I would say it's adjacent to. It's across the street.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
And, and I think if you looked in a Merriam-Webster dictionary, I'm not sure it would tell you, but I think in general, how codes are interpreted, that's how it's interpreted. There's adjoining, abutting, they mean the same thing. Adjacent means it could be across the street or an alley. And there might even be more room for interpretation there. It's still kind of a vague term, but that's generally how that works. So I'm going to go to the next screen. I know this is kind of time-consuming, but I think this is important to understand how this works, in thinking of the questions that were raised at the last meeting. So here's another example. So this is down on South, this is on Princeton, actually, right, or South Main. South Princeton, it's where Main turns it, turns into, goes into a couplet. So if you look at this, this, look at one of these lots over here. If someone was going to rezone one of these properties across the street from here, and they want to do mixed-use, under alternative one, it would be a candidate for that. Alternative two, it would not, because it's adjacent to other residential zoning. Keep in mind that there's not a minimum district size for the commercial districts or the residential districts. So this, if someone wanted to rezone this to, say, C1 or C2, they could do that. I mean, it has to go through the process, of course, and that's something always keep in mind. It's not automatic, it's still to go through the process of getting the rezoning approved. It's just whether it's a candidate or not.
So what that really comes down to, and that's where I was going to head with this, is just because some of this is there, it's still got to go through the process, and we've got to make sure it meets the overall plan, what the city has set out. So it's not a shoo-in, if somebody can come in and do that. It still has to go through the process.
Yes, absolutely.
But once it's changed, we can't stop future uses, once it's changed either, though.
Still has to comply with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Which I haven't seen that yet. I, I like, you know, I want to figure that.
But if, once it's changed, if someone, and that's something else we talked about, once it's changed, if we approve the use that time, once, once this is changed, someone else comes along and the neighbors don't like what's going on there, we can't stop that.
Right, as long as it's in that zoning district.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as it's permitted use.
I'm going to, I'm going to clarify that. So...
It's being pursued.
You, we can't stop them from applying, we can't stop it from being considered, but it still has to go through the process. You have to provide the findings to support the rezon.
The first time.
That's not, what he's saying is for future property owners. Once it's zoned, in the instance, which we would never do, I don't think, the instance you gave, which would be spot zoning, which we would probably consider that on a much larger tract, but maybe not on one residential lot. But if we did, and we zoned it C2, then that owner might have a use for it, but the next owner, it's still going to be zoned C2, and any use in that C2 classification could be used then.
That's correct. I must have misunderstood the...
Yeah, we only have to say the first time.
Right, that's right. That's right. That's why the zoning is very important.
Yeah.
Because there are uses by right, and we're going to go through those in just a second. Okay, I showed you the size of a typical block. So in your packet, and this is where I want to switch to the other one, if you might. Thank you, Austin.
Again, before we go any further, just, I want to ask the Commissioners, we have no one here from the public. Do we have, do we have anybody on Zoom that wants to speak to the public hearing?
We do have Jennifer Reinhardt in a son, but as for public members, Austin, does anyone else join other than Jennifer?
Josh Walker.
The applicant.
Yeah, okay.
But that's the applicant for the re, for the rezon, not for this.
We don't have anyone else.
So now let me ask the Director this. Since we have no one to appear to speak at the public hearing, should we close, because we're having, we're having committee discussion on it now, which usually doesn't happen during the public hearing section, shall we, shall we close the public hearing section and get into Planning Commission discussion on it? Or do you want, do you want to read all of this into the record during the public hearing?
I think it'd be best for me to make the presentation.
Okay.
Just for clarity.
Is that okay with everybody?
And then questions.
Pardon me?
Because I think...
I'm taking notes, so...
Okay. Because I, that was something that was very important that was expressed, and I, if I'm going too slow through it, just tell me.
No, 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 I just, we're getting questions as we go along, and since we don't really have a, anybody here from the public that wants to make comments, I was thinking we could close the public hearing and just, you could give us the presentation, and then we could stop you and ask questions as we went along, as opposed to the public hearing process.
And I think you could do that. I don't think there'd be anything wrong with that if you wanted to do that.
Then I'm going to ask, is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, now.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
So, all right. Oh, that's right. So this is supposed to scroll, Austin? There we go, okay. Okay, so this is on page 12 of the packet, and this tells you what uses are permitted and conditional in both of the mixed-use districts. So in the mixed-use R C district, any use permitted in the R2 or R3 zoning district is a permitted use, that's permitted by right. Except schools are a conditional use. Any use permitted in the C1 or C2 zoning districts are permitted. Conditional uses, any use allowed as a conditional use in the R2 or R3 zoning districts, any use allowed as a conditional use in the C1 or C2 zoning districts. But it also allows mini-storage as a conditional use, and allows brew pubs as a conditional use. Okay, let's go to the M U C I district, and this is quite a bit different. It allows more intensive uses. So permitted uses under this zoning, any use permitted in the C3 zoning district. Notice that it doesn't allow residential uses necessarily. It's the C3 zoning district and the I1 zoning district. And then it lists a couple other uses that might not be in the I1 table that would be allowed. These are permitted uses. Conditional uses, any use, any use that's a conditional use in the C3 zoning district, any use that's allowed is a conditional use in the I1 zoning district. Okay, so now let's go to, this is going to apply to the M U R C, because this is the residential, this is the table for residential zoning. So remember, it, it stated that it reverts to R2 and R3 zoning. So if you look at the top use, the number one use listed in the table, any public building or land use by a department of the city, that's a conditional use. So like a fire station, that would require a conditional use permit. Look at, look at the dwellings, so two-family dwellings, and higher-density housing would be permitted. I'm not going to go through every one of these, but I think it gives you a chance to read these, so you get an idea of what's permitted. So I'm just going to scroll through this slowly, and then there are footnotes, and this is all in your packet. So I'm going to go down to the next section, unless you have any questions about that. So remember, we're, we're still talking about the M U R C district. So here's the table of commercial uses. So again, for the M U R C district, it's any use permitted in the C1 or C2 zoning district. So look at the column for C1 and C2.
And that is residential to commercial, not commercial to residential?
I'm not sure what you mean by residential to commercial.
Well, it's a residential-commercial mixed-use. So the predominant use would be residential, and then commercial would be essentially be the accessory that's allowed in the mixed-use.
No, it doesn't really mean that.
Okay.
So any use that's listed, I would say just about any use that's listed is the primary use of a property.
Okay.
So with a mixed, something that's mixed-use, you could have two primary uses on a piece of property. So there's a lot of confusion about primary or principal uses versus accessory uses. So an example would be you have a single-family residence.
Mm-hmm.
On a residential lot, that's the principal use. You might have a swimming pool in the backyard, that's an accessory use. Now, if you had that same residential lot and you just wanted to put a swimming pool on it, it's probably not allowed, because it's just a swimming pool. It has to be related and subsidiary to something else that's allowed.
Correct, and I understand that part of it. What I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around is for, for the purpose of this right here is if, whenever the zoning, the way that I was reading it, and I, the way I understand it, is you have a residential neighborhood with houses in it that could be repurposed, reused as a commercial use. Not a commercial zoning looking to put residential in the commercial zoning use. And then whenever I look at the other one for the C I, it's, it's a commercial, already zoned, commercial, but the mixed-use would be allowing industrial, anything that's allowed within that zoning. So for instance, in the R2 or R3, it allows to have those commercial uses in that residential district, not the commercial allowing for the residential.
It doesn't really matter. Once, once something is zoned M U R C, these are the uses that are going to be permitted and conditional.
Okay.
It, it just reverts to the table.
So your question is, from what I'm reading, she's, what we're, what we're asking is if it's a commercial use currently, what allows us to bring residential in? what allows us to bring residential in?
Right, that's, that's like downgrading the zoning.
Can it, can it go both ways?
Can it go both ways?
If the, if it's under the zoning, yes. It doesn't actually really matter. It's just whatever's permitted in that zoning district.
So the first zoning allows the flip-flop of commercial to residential or residential to commercial?
When you say.
That's the question.
Well, with the R2, R3, it allows with a conditional use. Doing it as a mixed use, it allows it without having a conditional use on it.
Which particular use are you talking about?
The RC.
So once it, the RC, the MU RC is just like any other zoning district. It has its own uses that are allowed, conditional and prohibited. And once you have that zoning, this table dictates what you're allowed, what uses are allowed on that property.
Okay.
And it doesn't, it doesn't matter what, if it was zoned. The, the transition from you, one use to another doesn't really play into it. It's just, if someone.
It's what's allowed as well.
It's what's allowed, what's permitted and conditional. So, let's say someone rezones some property to MU RC, it gets approved as that. And then someone comes to us and they say, and that's not a good example. I wanna put a bed and breakfast on this property. And they come and talk to, they talk to me or they talk to someone in our office. And, you know, what am I, am I allowed to do that? And we go to this table and say, it requires a conditional use permit. It's just as straightforward as that.
Okay.
Another example might be, I wanna put a daycare facility on my property. It's on R, MU RC. It's a permitted use. In fact, there's no, there's not even a stand, there's not even a footnote that says what's required. Specifically, it's just a permitted use. So there's no zoning action required. It doesn't go to the planning commission or governing body. Does that help?
It does. Um, I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking about the whole realm of the changing of the requirement for the zoning size. And just, I'm just trying to process it, how that would work, how that looks, so.
Yeah, I think you're trying to, that's, and that's what we're talking about. What are the implications of that, right?
Mm-hmm.
And what the implications are is, I don't, I don't know. I think a daycare actually requires a conditional use permit in our districts, I believe.
It doesn't in R, but it doesn't in a C.
Right.
Doesn't in a C, so that's the implication of it. You put a daycare there and it's gonna be a permitted use.
In a mixed use?
In, in the MU.
Right, in the MU.
On the MU RC. Right, yeah. And there are other implications, so. That's another good example. Here's another one. Funeral, crematory, mortuary service. So take a typical funeral home. I'm not gonna go back to the table, but I'm pretty sure that's not even listed in the residential tables. So I, so I'm pretty certain that you cannot do a funeral crematory or mortuary service in a residential district. And maybe you can look at that, but I don't think that's listed.
It was not.
It's not. So, that's another implication. So if someone has MU RC zoning, that's a permitted use. It's permitted by right. So once they get that zoning, there, there's not gonna be some debate about whether they can do it. It's not gonna go to the planning commission and governing body. It's gonna be, they might have to provide staff with a site plan or review the site plan, make sure it, you know, has all the proper landscaping and screening and all of that. So when someone applies for zoning, a zoning change, one of the things that's important to do is to understand what the implications of that zoning change are. So there's still a process for doing that. This is just saying that a smaller-sized property could be a candidate for it. And again, this is all in your packet. So here's another one. Could be a significant, have some kind of significant impact. So again, it allows C1 and C2 uses in the MU RC district. Restaurants permitted. There's a footnote. And I don't know what that it says until I go down and look at it. Subject to intensity standards of section 14-4. And I don't think I have that in this packet. So let's, let's look at what that says. 14-4.
Aren't we getting a little off of what our, today we're talking about the size of the MU RC and the size of the MUCI.
Yeah.
Not about the uses, because the uses are already established by code. It's just, and if you came in with a three-acre tract right now, anybody could come in and apply for these changes right now with a three-acre tract.
So what, what I heard at the last meeting is that the commission wanted to know more about what the uses that are permitted. And I might be going into too much detail.
I agree with that.
No, that was said. Yeah, that was said.
Yeah, but don't you think we're getting maybe, cause, cause these are all, they're all permitted already in our code. I think the thing was because we were talking about the possibility of a tow lot going in. And that's, so we, and we didn't have the tables in front of us. That's why we were wondering what could be used. But, the real discussion that we need to have tonight, I think, to, so we're not here until one o'clock in the morning, is do we think that as we look at these uses, is this something that we wanna downsize the parcels? I'm not saying, I'm not.
I, I think I understand what you're saying.
Those uses in here certainly can't be done on an acre. In the commercial, in the commercial side of this and in the industrial side of this, they certainly can't be done on an acre. They certainly, some of them looks like would be a tight fit for three acres.
Oh, you're, okay.
But, the, the, the reason we're here is because as we were going through this process, we found out that this particular property wouldn't fit because it requires a minimum of three acres.
Yeah.
The uses are already in the regulations and we're not talking about changing the usages. We just wondered, A, what usages there were and B, should we lower the size to accommodate things like this and recur in the future?
I think that's what I'm trying to do is answer, is answer what the uses are that are allowed, would be allowed under MU RC. I'm probably covering it in too much detail, but.
I don't, I don't know that that's the case. I'm just, was just thinking.
Yeah.
I'm seeing a lot of things in here and I'm thinking, I don't know that I want those in an MU RC.
That's, that's.
But that's for a discussion for another time.
Well, that's the whole point of this.
Yeah.
So I, I missed the study session where a lot of this was gone over. Did, did we get the answer why it was set at three acres initially?
We did not get the answer. It wasn't historically documented. And so therefore it goes back to do, is this something that we need to revisit? And so that's what we're doing is we're revisiting, um, the potential of changing the lot, it's not even a lot, it's the district size.
District size.
And, and that was one of the things for clarification as well. It's not a lot, it's a district. Because whatever you change it, if there's more than one lot in that district, it changes along with it.
Yeah.
And then if it's, and then if it's in, in the middle of a, a city block, do we want a single lot to be able to do this? Or if someone buys a half a block, do we want that to happen? Or if someone buys a whole block, do we want that to happen?
Right.
I wouldn't think so.
And that's why I was asking for clarification about the C1 and the C, I'm, I'm not C1, but the MU RC and the MUCI. Because the way I'm understanding it, MU RC, which is what the proposed applicant scenario, because, I mean, the scenario was given in our packet, so I'm using it as our, this. If you have, um, a commercial district all the way around you and you're currently zoned commercial, they're wanting to downgrade to an C and RC, residential, commercial. Is that something, you know, that whenever we're looking at the lot size, right now it doesn't meet that requirement? And this is one applicant. And have we had any applicants in the past who have made or been turned down because of the lot size? Or is this a one-and-done and we're changing our zoning for this one-and-done? And because no matter what decision we make tonight will affect the future.
So some of that has taken place in the past because you've got it all up and down Main Street from Walgreens North, right?
Well, a lot of it was grandfathered in. Like your example on North Main Street, that's Crook's floor covering.
Mm-hmm.
That's something that's been there forever.
It's on C3.
And, and that would also go inconsistent with the residential-commercial mixed use. Because you have predominantly residential in the area, but someone, you have an old building or structure in the area that someone would like to take that and make use out of it. And so then having it in MU RC would allow for them to have that commercial use in a residential. Am I correct?
It changes the zoning so you can have.
Right, that it allows for it.
A wider variety of uses.
Right.
That are allowed. Keep in mind that there are also some design standards in the MU districts that don't apply in the other districts. So there's a little more, it's a little more form-based and design-oriented. Not to confuse the matter, but that. So, if you'd like, I can advance to the, talking about the, what uses are permitted in the MUCI. If you want me to do that.
I think that would be good.
Okay, and I'll, I'll try to, I won't cover every use here. So, again, MUCI, it allows, the, the uses that are permitted in C3 are permitted in MUCI. Uses that are conditional in C3 are permitted in MUCI. And ambulance service, that's a permitted use. Amusement places, a permitted use. A bowling alley is a permitted use. And again, I won't go through all these if you want to stop and we can talk at length about any of them. Okay, so there's also in your packet and on, on the screen here is also the industrial uses table. So I1 uses that are permit, uses permitted in the I1 district are permitted in the MUCI district. Uses that are conditional in the I1 district are conditional in the MUCI district. And there are some fairly intensive uses. Of course, it is I1. In fact, there's probably something that would qualify as a tow lot on this table.
There is, auto, under automotive.
Okay.
If you go back up to automotive. Truck wrecking or salvage yards, junkyards and scrap processing.
So that's not permitted. That would not be permitted in the MUCI. It would not be permitted in the MU RC.
Now, is it just I1?
It's just I1. It doesn't allow I2 uses. Yeah, it, it, I'm gonna double-check that. I don't wanna be wrong about that.
I guess the thing that I'm.
Yeah.
Having trouble with is why we're combining both of these in one set of definitions? And then saying that they could both go adjacent, I mean, I can't imagine, I, I, no, this is 2022. I'm sorry, I wanna take that back. I couldn't imagine in the past that somebody would come in and wanna put a tow lot in a residential neighborhood in Ottawa, Kansas. So just, I can't, but, but because of the way we've got this, these two zoning classifications hooked together, the definition says that they could at least apply for it.
So, neither of these districts would allow a tow lot, just to be clear.
Yeah, well.
The MUCI won't allow a tow lot.
But any industrial use, any, any of the permitted industrial, I1 industrial uses, why would we, why don't we have that separated, why don't we have two?
So.
Not only too intense, but why don't we have two separate?
We do have two intense, actually, in the, in the zoning, it's.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking right at it. I mean, I understand what we have.
So, so Mr. Chairman, I, as I was going through this, I anticipated you would ask that question. And so I, I have a fifth alternative. I know, I hated to bring a fifth alternative into this. But I'm gonna hand this out.
I know. I understand. I, I was having the same.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
But I think this will address that, that problem that you've identified. That the MU RC maybe shouldn't be treated the same way as the MUCI. So, the issue is, why would you treat MU RC the same as you'd treat MUCI? Cause the MU RC is less of a concern, has less intensive uses in it. The MUCI has more intensive uses in it. So, what this does is it, it creates a minimum for MU RC and a minimum for MUCI. They're two different district minimums. They're similar the way I've drafted it. And you could certainly substitute two acres for one acre. But this keeps them separate. So, what this does is, as written, as drafted, there's 17901. So check, paragraph 17901 is the same as alternative 1, except it only applies to MU RC. 17902 applies to MUCI and then just states here that it has to be one acre or more. You could substitute two acres for one acre. There are different ways you can do this.
Or leave it the same.
Or leave it three acres. The reason I wrote one acre is, as I was looking at some of the mixed-use CI districts along Wilson in North Ottawa, there's one district that is about an acre. And that was probably zoned that way because it reflects the current land use.
It was grandfathered, yeah.
It probably reflects what's there.
Yeah.
There are areas that are less than three acres. I think that there might be an instance where that makes, that's the best district classification, is MUCI. And if you set that minimum too high, it means that that's not an option. If someone wants to have an I1 use, that means they would get I1 zoning. That's the only zoning that would work for them. And mixed-use zoning might make more sense. It might be more compatible. So, I, I am recommending that there be a little flexibility about district size. But, recognizing that at some point, a recommendation needs to be made so you can move forward. And I've just tried to provide you alternatives so you could select one.
So do we have discussion?
Yeah.
Amongst ourselves? Whenever I look at the MUC, I mean, yeah, MUCI, if we're looking at one acre, I can't imagine. I guess you could have a kennel. I mean, gosh, whenever you look at these, would one, as you were stating, what would even fit on an acre? And if we're limiting, that again, it, it looks like as if it's allowing a spot zoning if someone comes in.
Be very difficult. You, you have occupant loads on for, for that type of structure. You have off-street parking to contend with. You've got.
Right.
There's a lot. You're not gonna be able to do anything with an acre.
On an acre, right.
Not in my opinion. But, to, to, to your point, all those up and down Wilson that are grandfathered in, they meet it. It's all gravel parking lot, which isn't allowed now.
Right, they, they were existing structures. And, and I think the intent goes back to of existing structures that are on the property and anything new needs to be conforming of the surrounding area.
I would agree.
Mr. Chairman, my, my, just, these, these tracts of land, these parcels on Wilson, these are all zoned MU. these are all zoned M U C I. And in a lot of cases, each one has its own use. In looking at the minimum lot size or parcel size needed for certain types of development, what I do know is like a convenience store with gas pumps, that's about an acre, acre and a half. Now, if it's something that requires a lot of attention, that might, that's a different story. But if that provides some frame of reference. But again, any of the alternatives that are being presented tonight would, would work for the rezoning application that's also on the agenda.
I certainly would like the last one you presented us with better than any of the others because I think we need to separate the.
Okay.
Does anybody have any comments on that, whether you, which one you'd like to see?
I don't know that I like any of them personally, just because whenever I'm looking at the intent, the last one that was presented, it was one acre more or less, or, or one acre or more. I, I don't see that as being compatible. I just see potential of having some issues in the future.
With the M U R C?
With, with the M U R C, the M U C I.
If you go back to your example on the North Main, can you go back to that one? The map that shows the North Main lots?
Yeah, I think it's right here. Right there.
Yeah, so my thought is, I like, I'm gonna use Crooks floor covering, covering there as, as example. I think it's a good idea to allow someone in that situation to change the zoning if it is adjoining it. An example, because that, and that wouldn't be spot zoning, but an example is Crooks gets really, really big and needs a warehouse. I think they should be able to have the ability to buy the lot right next to them and change that zoning. That's what I think. And that's not a half acre, that's not one acre, but it's adjoining.
Well, as we were discussing, that, that was probably grandfathered in to allow that continued use. And so the entire area didn't have to get rezoned, it, it allowed that continued use there.
Correct, so if that business gets bigger, depending on which one is chosen tonight, he wouldn't be able to add on to his business. And that's what I'm saying, I, I think in that situation, yes, it's grandfathered in, but if his business gets bigger, I don't think we should, I think in that situation, he should have the right to come in and at least.
Make application.
Be able to grow, yeah.
That's understandable.
According to this last one, he would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It will, it not, and if I'm understanding this right, number two, he wouldn't be able to do that.
Right.
Correct.
So the last one fits it all and, and, and every, every, every partial.
Except for one acre.
But then again, we're looking at one lot, we would set precedence for the entire city.
Well, but that.
And, but it would allow him to still come in and make application and we could make that determination on whether or not we would allow that, that, that expansion of his mixed use.
But when you're saying we're talking about for the whole city, that, that, that's an example that's everywhere and that's what we're talking about.
I understand.
The things that were grandfathered in. Because if, if, if it's in the middle of a city block, if, if there's no businesses there, the way this last option is read, it's, it's not gonna be allowed anyway.
So really, this, this option allows it and, and probably cleans up a lot of things. On the flip side, the design guidelines is gonna end up trumping it and dictating truly what could be built for expansion on these lots. So this clears it up, but they still have to meet the guidelines of the design.
Right.
The guidelines, the, the.
Bill standards.
Right.
Standards. There are standards actually in the district and, and that's why I, I gave you all a copy of the entire article for mixed use. Because I thought that could come up as a question. I don't know those just by rote, I would have to look at them. But they are generally dealing with design and form and they're intended to provide for more compatible design. So if you think of something that's an incompatible design, think of a, maybe a convenience store with a lot of lights, the canopy is right next to a house. This would probably control that to some extent.
That's correct.
And it, it might require setbacks or it might require.
Well, it does require setbacks.
So the other thing to think about here too is the mixed-use district would allow someone to come in and say, redevelop, say, a couple of these lots. And if they wanted to have a mixed-use project, say with some retail and some residential, it would allow them to do that. Whereas that's not really, the other zoning classifications don't really allow that, except maybe C four. But this really isn't in the central business district. So that's really the whole point of the MU district is to allow that, that mix of uses that, that is a good mix of uses.
And I, I, that's what I'm saying, I think the flexibility is good.
Yeah.
We kind of need to move this along, have, have you presented most of what you want to present on this issue?
I, I just stand for questions at this point.
Commissioner Kane, do you have any thoughts or?
No, I mean, I like, I mean, I wish the fifth option would have been the first option, but because I think it makes more sense to split the two and set the minimums to an acre or more. I know that we're having this discussion primarily because of what's come up with what's happening out there off of Twenty Third. So I'll get to that when we get to that discussion there, but I like option five.
Mr. Crowley?
Yeah, I agree with number five.
Commissioner Elmer?
You agree with what?
Option five.
That's what I'm.
My only comment there is, kind of like what Brian said, we're here because of what's going on on Twenty Third and the one acre is the only thing that I have a question about, why, why are we changing it to one acre? If we're worried about what's going on out there and the next, the next thing we're talking about. Again, back to my example, if they were wanting to do something there, they could not do it with the changes that we're making here being the one.
Yes.
Yeah, they could, certainly could. A minimum district size does not apply when adjacent to a commercial district. So since the business you're talking about is commercial, the minimum lot size wouldn't apply if it bought the, if it bought the property to the south. The design codes and the building codes would apply, but.
Well, then why don't we just, just change that portion of it, why do we have to change the lot size?
Because we wouldn't be having any discussion.
But that's still an answer.
Because if we can't change the lot size, then we can't do anything with the project on Twenty Third Street.
Yes.
And that's what it boils down to.
Yeah.
Is we're, we're trying to accommodate something developing out on Twenty Third Street that I think is good. But in order to do that, we have to change the minimum lot size. So that's why.
Which we didn't know that we had to change until an hour or two before the commission meeting, when we were gonna approve, we were gonna have the public hearing.
Right.
Yeah. And that's what brought all this discussion about, was the fact that we found out after we, after we as a, as a city had, had advised the.
And these are all great discussions because I think it's important for us as planning commissioners to know what, what it is we're actually looking at in terms of development, in terms of what can actually go in certain areas. I mean, I can envision what the plan is for Twenty Third Street without going into it, but but if we have to address the lot size, then we have to address the lot size.
And then I see a span, unless adjacent.
Yeah, yeah. One of the things that I, and the reason why I think we, maybe an acre is not enough, but one of the reasons I think we need a minimum in here is, let's just take a block, let's just say the ten hundred block of South Main. Let's say a developer comes in and wants to put a storefront in or two storefronts in and wants to put housing over the top of them. And wants to put units over the top. If we have a minimum size, they can't come in and do it on one or two lots, they're gonna have to buy. They're gonna have to have a large enough parcel to do a mixed use. As opposed to if we don't have any minimum size in there. I don't know whether an acre is big enough, you say we've got about four point three acres in a standard city block or in a normal city block. So that would be, you could put a mixed use in with an acre, you could put a mixed use in on a quarter of a city block or a half of a city block on one side of the street, you know, a half of one side of a city block or a quarter of a city block. You could put a mixed-use development in there. And I'm not sure whether that's large enough, I mean, my, my dealings with mixed use has always been in large subdivisions where they, you come in with a large subdivision and have a set aside for, you know, like the.
The amenities.
Yeah, like a project, the project north of Town Center in.
Right.
In Overland Park where they've got the upper stories or living units and the lower floors as, as businesses. And that's, to me, that's always what I thought of as mixed use. As opposed to doing something to primarily as a, to, to deal with existing buildings and.
Standard dwellings, yeah.
That's, and that's the way I have been reading, it's the, it's to deal with existing or vacant lots.
Yeah, see, I've never, ever even, I mean, I, I understand and I agree that that's what it says, but that's typically not when you talk to developers about mixed use, that's not what you talk about, you're talking about large projects.
Sure, and, and to read it all, so if, if you haven't read it, it's the, it's the objectives of the M U R C, this is just the R C. M U R C district include retention and attraction of businesses, workplaces and residences through adaptive reuse and rehabilitation of existing buildings and redeveloping vacant and underutilized properties through appropriately scaled infill development and high-quality development and urban design standards that maintain a sense of history, human scale and pedestrian orientation.
And that's what I assume is number three, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And then whenever you're looking at mixed-use C I, the objectives of that include retention and attraction of businesses and certain industrial activities through adaptive reuse and rehabilitation of existing buildings and redeveloping vacant and underutilized properties by infill development, and that's it. And so whenever we're looking at the lot size minimum, there's already that lot size minimum of three acres. It may not meet the intent of our applicant, but we already have a lot size minimum. And I think that there was a reason for it whenever you look at what the purpose, the objectives of what these districts are. And, and Crooks isn't existing, it's already there. There's nothing that I, I can see, would they be prevented of coming in to expand? I don't know, since they're in existing.
I'll go back, I'll go back to that, that page and we'll look at that real quick. Because I think it's important to think about this, the implications of it, to understand it.
I've got another, so, so to go back to where I think where we were talking earlier, being able to go from the commercial to the residential, doesn't that already apply as well? Because this is all of our commercial properties, right? So you, we've got the designations on these, what's to say that you can't drop down to that just because of a lot size?
The, the.
Well, you also have to look at what the M U R C, that's why I was asking for clarification questions. And that's, that's something to be determined on the next discussion. But that's, that's why I was asking those questions.
So to answer your question about this, this is Crook, is this Crooks floor covering right there?
Yes.
Correct.
So let's say they wanted to expand, let's say that they wanted a parking lot because they don't have enough parking and they want, they want to attract customers, so they want to have a parking lot on the side of their building. They could apply for, this is on C three, they can apply for C three zoning. So the MU, they don't need the MU zoning to do that, they can apply for that. Let's say that they want to convert this into something more interesting maybe, mixed use. They can't do that under the C three zoning, I don't think residential is permitted under C three zoning. That's where the MU zoning would be required. The other thing is, is let's say that, let's, let's forget about Crooks for example, or for, for a minute. Let's look down here, I can't remember what is in this location, but it's a commercial building.
It used to be a printing place.
Is, is it vacant?
No, they, they make sauerkraut.
Okay, so that's it, they make, they make food, they manufacture food or process food. So let's say this person, this doesn't, this isn't a great residential use because they don't like the smell of sauerkraut being processed. So someone wants to convert that into something else, maybe it's a small retail shop, maybe it's a hair salon or something like that. They could apply for zone, they could apply for commercial zoning. But, but the MU zoning might give them more options, it might allow them mixed use. Maybe it's a, maybe it's an office with a residence above it. The MU zoning would allow them to do that and it would be a, a, a good transition from this, what you could arguably call an industrial use to a residential use. So the, the MU zoning, I, I don't want to belabor this too much, but if there's more flexibility for these types of situations, I think that's, in my professional recommendation, that's what you want to do. If you look at the intent of the district, it's really, it's not just for large-scale mixed-use development. It's to, it's to allow for redevelopment and reuse of old buildings. And when that happens, you tend to have more compatible, human-scale development than if, say, you developed an entire half a block and cleared all the houses and started fresh. You're gonna have big parking lots, so a smaller district size or allowing it, no district size if it's adjacent to commercial use, that's, that's, those are the things I was thinking about in making this recommendation. You could take this option five and if you're uncomfortable with an acre, you can substitute two acres for an acre. That's, that's something you can do if you think an acre is too, opens it up too much.
Right, what allows us to do that is the, or more, right, so.
Totally out of left field. What is the current zoning at the site that we're looking at? The site that we're gonna talk about in our next discussion.
C three.
C three. Okay, C three. Dwellings, dwellings, dwellings.
If it was a C four, it would work.
What's that?
I think I remember where you're going because I have the same question.
Uh, in, in.
You're looking at eighteen C.
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at number eighteen in C three, it's conditional use as, on the ground floor and permitted use when they're on the second floor. But then we go back to number fifty-eight, which is any other use determined by the zoning administrator to be of the same general character as the above listed uses.
Where, where are you, where are you reading? Where are you, where are you reading it?
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the permitted and allowable uses in commercial.
Can you cite the page number?
I'm sorry, page 16 and page 18. Page 16, number 18, dwellings.
And 18, number 58.
Yeah. Number 18 on page 16 and number 58 on page 18.
You're on page 16, correct?
I'm on page 16, number 18, dwellings.
Okay.
A, when a dwelling unit located on the ground floor of a commercial structure but not to exceed 50% of the structure's ground floor area. That is, in C3, that's a conditional use. A permitted use is when dwelling units located other than the ground floor of the commercial structure. That's a permitted use.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then you go back to number 58, any other use determined by the zoning administrator to be of the same general character as the above-listed use. Okay, so right now, as a permitted use, all of the floors except for the main floor could be residential. With a conditional use on top of that, half of the ground floor could be residential. The zoning administrator can make exceptions to that.
That's where I was at initially, it was administrative.
I don't, I don't think that this is intended to make wholesale exceptions to a use. It's if something is, is the same or the same-
Any other use is determined by the administrator, it doesn't give a percentage or a number or a-
Yeah, so-
Example.
If you're talking about the building, the building's gonna, it's two stories, right? Two floors?
Correct.
Two or three, I don't-
So right now, I don't know how many rooms it has in it, but it's gonna have 44 apartments. And they're gonna be on both floors.
Yes.
And what C3, and C3 allows, it does not allow dwellings on the ground floor.
No, it absolutely does as a conditional use.
As a conditional use.
Right, but they could apply for a conditional, that's my point. My point is, with a conditional use permit in C3, one and a half of those stories could already be residential. If he came in and applied for a conditional use, then number 58 gives the zoning administrator even more allowance. Now, is it, is it in the-
The intent of number 58 is not to over, to do something that's contrary.
But this isn't contrary because we're allowing dwellings in the district. That's what, that's, that's-
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it that way.
All you're doing is picking up that, that 50%, that's a conditional use.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that requires a conditional use permit.
That's what we're saying.
Right.
So if we could have said, Mr. Applicant, you can reapply for a conditional use permit.
Right.
If I, if I may, hi, this is Jennifer through the chair, can you all hear me?
Jennifer, not well, hang on, I think he's gonna turn you up.
Um, is this louder? I can yell. Um, well, I'll, through the chair, if I may, to address Cal, your point and my interpretation. So 18C, you'll note, does specify that dwelling units without associated commercial uses is only conditional in C4. My interpretation is, what was it, 58 does not apply because 18C specifically does specify what you were suggesting of both floors as residential, so without a, a commercial use. So that was my interpretation where 58 would not apply in this case because the use table does explicitly say that dwelling units without commercial are not allowed, are not permitted in C3.
So 18C answers your question.
Well.
So the applicant would have to-
It's not permitted or conditional.
It's because he has no intent.
Not when you read 18C.
I'm reading it.
It's because the applicant doesn't have any intent to have a commercial use in the building. He wants it all residential.
It's all residential, so then it's not, it's not permitted or-
And it's not designed for-
So in the C3, it's not-
Yeah, I can apply for C4.
C4 would not be appropriate in this location. It's a central business district zoning, park is required. I, I think a text amendment's a very simple solution with very few negative implications. I, I am not seeing a lot of negative implications with our recommendation. You could, you could argue that one acre is not big enough, maybe it should be two acres, maybe, two acres is a half a residential block. So you, I think you could increase it to two acres and it would address any concerns you have. If you're uncomfortable with not having a minimum district size for property that's adjacent to commercial zoning, you could just make it a minimum of two acres and be, you'd be fine.
I'm comfortable with option number five as you read it.
I am too. And the only reason I brought that up was because it didn't seem like we were getting anywhere, it seemed like we were just going around.
No, I like the outside-the-box thinking. Because I was, I was reading through this list and I saw that 18C, I was like, huh, I mean, that's really what he's trying to do. But he can't get there because it's not a C4 in that district.
And there's no commercial.
What's that?
And he's not gonna put any commercial in it.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and also doesn't, it doesn't meet the minimum lot requirement.
Exactly, which brings us full circle to why we're-
Right.
Talking about lot sizes.
So Mr. Chairman, item, row 58 is a little confusing. It looks like it might give kind of carte blanche to just override that, but that's really not the way I see it. It's, if you have something that's really basically the same as something listed, but it doesn't, it's not described exactly the same, then you can determine that it's one of these uses. So that's, so I agree with what Jennifer was saying, that, that that's not an option because of 18C really.
So how does a conditional use permit not clear up what we're trying to accomplish without all this?
Because it has to have a, one commercial business in it, according to 18C.
And his intent is not to have any commercial in it.
All right, well, let's try to get this moved along. I'm kinda hearing a consensus that the majority of the commission is comfortable with language in, presented to us as option number five, with the exception of some may want to make a larger district, especially for the industrial part of it, or do we have, I mean, at this point, I would take a suggestion on what we do and I would take a motion to recommend to the City Commission that they pass the language.
I'm ready to make a motion.
I, just the language as written already allows for the powers that be, whether it's us or Mr. Hollow there, to set, okay, this is the business that wants to come in here, well, a, a one-acre lot really is too small for that. Because it says or more, it allows for that freedom to say, well, you can't fit here because you're really too big a business to fit on this lot.
All right.
It's just not less.
Right.
It's not less. You started to say something, Commissioner Crowley?
I'm ready to make a motion.
You start to say something, Commissioner Crowley?
Make the motion.
I make a motion to accept number five as it is written, as findings.
I second.
Commissioner Maine seconded. Would you call the roll? And we're recommending this for city approval.
Correct.
Yes.
Member Maine?
Yes.
Member Elmer?
No.
Chairperson Lantus?
Yes.
Member Crowley?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Item number, well, old business. Item number one, rezone C3 to M U R C, generally located at 2331 South Cedar, and I would suggest that we might want to put in there proposed, do we want to put in there something since we're doing these parallel, do we need to have anything changed in that verbiage? Director Hall?
Your question again?
Uh, since our, our findings and our motion, would it be to, to, to rezone from C3 to M U R C as proposed? Do we need to add that?
I don't think you need to add that.
Okay.
But-
All right. Okay, discussion. I think, is the applicant still on Zoom?
Mr. Chair, I think Jennifer had a few just comments.
Okay, well, I'm asking if the applicant's still on that.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Right now, thank you.
Yeah, I'm still on.
You have anything that you would like to speak to us about, Mr. Walker, before we proceed?
Not at this time, I'll stay on to answer questions and offer any rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jennifer, do you have anything that you'd like to present us with?
Hi, yes, everyone, through the chair, I just had a couple of points to make in response to our conversation at the last meeting. So not to belabor the point, you know, this, this application, the proposal is to really accommodate affordable workforce housing. The analysis of staff that looked at R3, C4, PUD, didn't find that any of those would be recommended zoning alternatives. As you all know, multifamily without an associated commercial use is not allowed in C3. So really to accommodate, you know, a mixed use or to allow for multifamily, we're proposing that M U C R is the best candidate for this site and then, and does support the comprehensive plan goals to support development of affordable and attainable housing in the city. The only comment I did want to make is I wanted to change a finding of fact, I know that was a conversation that we had, so I wanted, or my recommendation is to amend the finding of fact number one. I'm gonna share my screen, but it just adds language, so, so overall, the findings, I think are, are, do not change. You know, the overall finding is this is the most compatible district for all of those reasons. This finding, for one, to address whether the change in classification would be consistent with the intent and purposes of these regulations. The change I am proposing from what was submitted at the staff report is just to add language, you know, provided that the property meets the minimum district size requirement of the M U R district as amended. I think that gets to the discussion and the recommendation and the vote that you all had at the, the previous line item. I'll stop share now. And otherwise, I am not recommend, or I'm not changing the other findings of fact, the recommendation of staff stands for approval of the rezoning from C3 to M U C R, and then with kind of the understanding that as, you know, depending on the action and the conversation at the planning commission, the, you know, would be contingent on the text amendment of being approved by the governing body. So, you know, this could not be rezoned as is, but should the text amendment be approved by City Commission, then staff believes that the recommended approval of this rezoning would hold and could, should the, you know, your honorable body tonight decide to make a motion, staff believes that both items could advance with this one following, with the organization of the agenda for approval. We believe that should the condition be met, then this rezoning could, would stand with the approval. So with that, I guess, the, the only change to the presentation of the last time is to amend finding of fact, one, to account for this nuance and, but otherwise still stand by the decision that, or the recommendation that this mixed use would achieve flexibility but also allow for the, to allow for more affordable hous, to meet the need of the affordable housing in, in this way. I'm happy to answer questions, or Mr. Walker, if, if the applicant has any questions or rebuttal.
And Jennifer, I can barely hear you, and I'm trying really hard, and I apologize. But whenever I have my question, you say that the planned unit development zoning is not a preferred zoning, what, R3 is not a good fit for multiple reasons, and the planned unit zoning is not preferred zoning option for the property and land use either. What is it that makes it not a good fit for the R3, but yet we're wanting to do an R C?
Sure, so R3 has density standards and then also a little wary of having R C right next to commercial in a way that the mixed use does not present the same hesitation with the intensity of uses as proposed, but really it was the, the density standards of R3 that would be difficult to meet as proposed. The planned unit development is an overlay district and with that comes additional, it would require the applicant to produce a lot more information detailing the site plan and, and really is, in my opinion, is not appropriate for this single parcel of this size just to accommodate multifamily housing. So really, planned unit development, it was kind of scale and the, putting the burden on the applicant in a, in a way that is not, is not, I, I'm not recommending. And then C4, as, as mentioned, is central business district, so not, similarly not appropriate at this location.
So actually, I think the PUD might have been the better way to go. It, it's never getting broke up, you can't sell all the units, it's, it's one unit, and to your point, you're identifying more things on a site plan that he's probably gonna do through that design phase anyway, so that, that might have been another way to go about this one.
Yeah, the only thing I didn't like about planned unit development was it's very specific in the, M U R C gives the investor, the property owner, more latitude should his concept not provide lucrative, there's, there's, they have, there's other options for the building.
Correct.
And the M U R C allows that and the PUD really doesn't allow that, and so-
PUD just addressed the current need. It doesn't, it didn't allow for future-
Right, it doesn't allow for different uses in the future. So-
But the current zoning would allow for short-term housing and it would allow for future growth with the current zoning in itself uses. The only thing that we're looking at here is that it would allow for the residential without having commercial. And whenever you look at the M U R C, again, I'm gonna go back to what, what the commercial use in district is, is that the objective is for the retention of, for the retention of businesses. So it's already a business that's there, they can continue their use, workplaces and residents through an adaptive reuse and rehabilitation for the existing buildings and redeveloping. But then whenever you go back to the first part of it, it's in a mixed use within a residential neighborhood. This is not in a residential neighborhood. Unless I am looking at the site plan differently and the zoning differently that's currently around it, it's all commercial and it's compatible mixed-use activity within a residential neighborhood. It includes a balance of compatible residential, office, civic, and neighborhood commercial retail services. This particular parcel that we're looking at for rezoning doesn't meet that, doesn't meet that. The way I, I'm reading this. Though I can understand that we do need residential, I, I get that, but if we're looking at with what the M U R C is, it doesn't meet it.
Anyone else wanna chime in on that?
Um, in response to that, I'm, if, I'm sharing my screen, it has the zoning map. I think this parcel came up before. It has the purple that's surrounded by commercial, and then I, I don't, I forget what pink is, but I would argue that, you know, this parcel is, you know, does not meet- It has the purple that's surrounded by commercial and then, I, I don't, I forget what pink is, but I would argue that, you know, this parcel is, you know, does not meet. Or, you know, the technical definition of the residential neighborhood as just read, as just described, but. I guess my, my argument is maybe broader than others, which is, which is fine, but my, my argument is, you know, the intent is to have a flexibility of mixed uses. And so I would see that as extending beyond a residential neighborhood, looking at the surrounding area with appropriate uses. And allowing for this higher density, multi-family in this commercial area. Whereas right now, it would not be allowed.
Anyone else?
And you're saying by going with the M U R C designation, it allows for us to bring the residential there, whereas there's no residential remotely close to it currently?
For multi-family with no associated commercial use, yes.
I, I, I know, yeah. But thank you for clarifying.
Does anybody need the. Rehash of all the findings or is everybody pretty comfortable with? The last discussion we had on?
I'm comfortable.
Okay. All right, so the, the. If there's, if there's no more discussion or no more different things that we need to talk about.
I actually, whenever we're looking at the character and condition of the surrounding neighborhood and affecting of the proposed change, I think that it would change the surrounding area from, from commercial to residential and. I, I do believe that that's, that's not in character of what the R C is for.
Where we are is we either need to. Have a motion to accept staff findings as our own or to modify the findings.
I'll make a motion to accept the staff findings.
As amended tonight?
Correct.
I second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the staff findings as our own, would you call the roll please?
Member Crowley?
Yes.
Member Maine?
Yes.
Member Elmer?
No.
Chairperson Lantus?
Yes.
And member Kane?
Yes.
Okay, next would be a motion to, to approve or to recommend the, to the city commission that they approve or disapprove the zoning request. Discussion, lacking discussion, a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mister Maine second, Mister Crowley made the motion to recommend to the city commission that they approve. Would you call the roll please?
Member Crowley?
Yes.
Member Maine?
Yes.
Member Elmer?
No.
Chairperson Lantus?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Okay, new business.
I don't have anything.
No new business announcements, the next regularly scheduled planning commission study session will be Thursday, May twenty-six, twenty twenty-two at noon. The next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting will be Wednesday, June eighth, twenty twenty-two at seven P M, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Don't move. For a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Tosed.